Okay. Let me call the April Town of Washington's ZBA meeting reporter, okay? On tonight's agenda, we have three items. Cromer on 324-346 Fowler Road requesting variance for relief on the front yard setback for new addition to the existing residence. Second is Paul at 351 South Road renovation to the existing structure located less than 100 feet from the road. Renovations will be to part of the exterior. And the last is yard guard for determination of appeal and zoning administrator's determination denying December 15th, 2023, in December 21st, 2023 pertaining to variance application for 610 Stanford Road. Before we do that, we've got the minutes of the March 19th meeting, any alterations, corrections?
I don't have anything.
Changes?
Nothing. Make a motion to accept.
We'll hear a second.
All right.
Motion by Frank, seconded by Alex, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously.
You're up Cromer.
We're not Cromer. Doug Larson, this is.
Yes.
So the architects.
You're the architects.
Good luck with yourself at home. Thanks. I think we're last here in January. AKR asked us to go back and get a few more things, including a survey. In the February, we canceled. We didn't get the deadline for March, so here we are.
Okay.
We've talked to Aaron about, Aaron wrote a memo to the board suggesting that the application should be held one of two ways, continue at the public hearing and take comments. Send it off the planning board with a condition about investigating the septic system or require that the septic system be investigated right now. We discussed it with the homeowner and we wrote a memo about this. She has an award winning garden and she would rather not dig up her yard right now. So she promises that she will do whatever is required to be done to the septic system by the planning board and the building inspector. She'd just like approval for this footprint so that she can have the potential of building inspector on the first floor if she were to need it. She doesn't need it right now, but you know, she's set an A where she needs to think about it. We have four or five more months of approvals to go through, so she would just like to continue the process and request for a conditional. That was something Aaron suggested.
Don't understand this bigging up for checking the septic. You take the top off, you measure up deep it is, how wide it is and do a set calculation, okay? You're talking about having to dig up the yard. Seeing that at all in my mind, so.
Is there a garden over the septic?
The entire property is beautifully landscaped and the garden club is coming to tour it in May.
So no access?
Well, there is a, from my understanding, there is a concrete cover and that's how we were able to locate where the septic is. It is under a flower bed, under a certain amount of dirt, so it would require removal of this flower bed and also just the equipment coming in through the lot.
Isn't there a concrete like plug? That's what most septic tanks have, just dig in the area, not bigger than a garbage lid.
It's covered though with plant material and soil, so it's under a certain amount of soil. It's not just right under the surface.
Under everything grows nice.
So we discussed it with Aaron and he suggested we write the memo to the board, which we did, which came in with our application.
Why don't you just take it to the planning board as a proposal and see what they say?
I think we have to come to this board first. You're not the gateway to the planning. We can go to the planning board concurrently?
No, you can go for a discussion, but not for an application.
Okay. But then that, what would be the point of that? Because it doesn't, the timeline will still be as long.
Well, to me what it says is if they have the same reservations about septic system, then you're going to have to do it.
Well, she's not saying, she's not saying she's not going to do it. She's, she'll do it if she needs this bedroom. This is just laying out a possibility of doing it. The building inspector is not going to give us a permit without proof from the county or an engineer that the septic system is adequate for four bedrooms. So that ultimately the building inspector is the gating event to this project, not the ZBA or the planning board.
So I think what they're asking for is conditional variance.
Conditional approval of the variance and a special permit. Does this need special permit too?
It does.
Just because we're increasing square footage of an non-conforming structure, but it's within the limits that the variance for that square footage is not.
We can add conditions to the granting of any variance too. With respect to septic or anything else that you may think of.
You guys feel?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the provisions, conditional permit. Safe trip.
That's, I would concur with that also. So if I understand this correctly, you're saying that you want to get a variance in the event that she is going to expand and have a better downstairs, then you will do what's necessary to the septic system.
Exactly.
But you won't do it, okay?
Exactly, until we have permission for septic.
Okay.
Well, I guess you could just wait until your garden party's over, right? Come back in a month.
Well, it's just that we have at least two or three more meetings to go to the planning board and then we've got a higher engineering looking septic system. It's just that. You know, you probably all know who Heather Croner is. She would just like the potential to do this. She's at a point in life where she's going to need to do it possibly quickly. And if going to four or five more meetings is not quickly.
Right.
I mean, you realize if you don't act on it, if we give you a variance and you don't act on it in a year, the variance is lost again.
Well, I think it's easier to come back.
How many square feet is the enlargement going to be?
Adjust.
It's 737 feet, is that correct?
No, no, it's gotta be more than 949.
Or let's say. Addition is 477. So there's a little caveat. So it's 737 square feet of additional building for lot coverage. But the actual conditioned or gross square footage is 512, which is what counts towards.
Okay. Well, there's a, there's a, a Velco door there, which is already considered lot coverage. We don't, we've disappeared, so that's the delta.
That's on the lot coverage. But the gross square footage is what determines.
That's the 737?
Well, 737 is related to the actual footprint of the new addition.
Right.
But that is also negated by existing lot coverage as the walkway. But as far as gross square footage, it's 512.
Typically don't do walkway in the calculations.
Well, this is part of the lot coverage.
Well, even if the 737. We're not talking lot coverage.
You're talking expansion of the, of the structure.
Expansion of the structure to come up with percentage increase.
The floor area. Well, that's based on gross square footage though. So like the open pergola does not count towards gross square footage calculation.
So then you're saying 737?
Well, so it's 512, gross, additional gross square footage. So that includes pergola. That does not include pergola because it's not gross square footage. The pergola counts against block up.
And that's on the basis of how many square feet?
Uh, let's see. 3,796 square feet they have now. They could expand up to 25%, which is 949 square feet when they're under that.
So we don't need a.
Special permit for it.
We lost them.
Well, I think there's two things going on. There's variances requested and they also need a special permit for the expansion.
Yeah. Okay.
Setback. That 3,796 square square footage is based as it existed in 1971, May 13th. That's the way that the document goes, right? So it was not.
It's only a front yard setback you need, right?
That is correct. We're asking for a 16 and a half. 9240.
Additional 18.5 feet.
I think it's something.
Okay, recent setback's the 26.5. So from 100. 25, 63 and a half feet.
Is that possible with the old dimensions from the?
That, that might be, which, which memo are you referencing?
I'm referencing here, Aaron's memo.
From January 12th.
Yep.
Yep.
So those setbacks were amended and is addressed in this memo because we were previously setting a setback, not from the property line, but the road edge. So the, under number eight, existing setback, front yard setbacks, 35 and a half feet and our proposed setbacks, 19 feet. For 16 and a half foot variance that were requested from the front.
You lost me. Say it again.
So the existing setback, front yard setbacks, 35 and a half feet. Our new proposed addition would have a 19 foot setback from the property edge. So there's a delta of 16 and a half feet. That was a revision since our first appearance because they were using a rose head rather than a popular.
Yeah, because it's hundreds allowed, right?
Yep.
Yep, I agree with that.
Okay. We don't need a percentage increase, so we just need the one variance there.
I think we can, I think they still need a special permit for the expansion of 512.
Okay. Not the, not a variance, okay. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Motion by the chair, seconded by Frank, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Anybody from the public have questions or how are your CACs comfortable?
Well, there's nothing wetlands involved, we're comfortable.
Okay.
Apparently you have 188 feet nine inches from in wetland.
Okay.
That's our concern.
Yep.
Okay. Kyle, any input?
Nope.
Aaron? You good? Josh, did you raise your hand?
No, I was scratching my nose.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it. Motion by Frank, seconded by Chair, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First order of business is a secret.
Yep.
Should be a type two action.
I would make a motion that we declare this application to be a type two action under secret.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Frank, seconded by Tate, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Yeah. Okay.
Now we'll tackle the front yards.
Now tackle the resolution, Frank.
The, let's deal with the variance first. We're measuring, it's 100 yards is what you need. You're going down to 19. The way John and I are looking at it, you need an 81 foot variance. Instead of just what your decrease was. So it gets you where you are. So I would make a motion that we grant a front yard setback area variance to the applicant in the amount of 81 feet. I would also make a condition of this variance that the applicant provide proof that the septic system is sufficient for the house as renovated and is in good operating condition.
Second.
Motion by Frank, seconded by Tate, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we need a special permit.
Yep, I make a, I make a motion that we approve a special permit for the expansion of this non-conforming home in the amount of 512 gross square feet.
You said gross?
And make a condition on that. Yeah, and also that it's also conditioned on the applicant providing proof that the septic system is a good working order and sufficient size for this residence.
I'll second that. Motion by Frank, seconded by the Chair, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Good to go to the planning board then.
You're done guys.
I'm sure we'll see you then.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Good luck there. Planning board, the CAC is going to talk about dark sky lighting, just so you know.
Okay. I mean. Electric lights.
Electric lights, okay. Oh, that's not my problem with the supply. Pretty standard stuff, nothing to do with these guys though.
Okay. Take care then.
All right, take it easy.
Yep.
Take it easy. One year, thanks for coming out.
One year, all right.
You're up. Come on up and explain what you're trying to do.
So the plan is to renovate an existing, existing structure. It's partly a greenhouse and kind of an extended workspace and extended greenhouse and the plan is to renovate it and make an auxiliary kitchen.
Are you changing the footprint?
No.
Why were you directed?
Less than 100 feet from the lot.
No.
No.
The point is you may not need a variance because you're not, you're not, you're, is your construction going to be any closer to the road?
Our architect, our contractor, he brought the paperwork to the building department, to the, what's his name, James.
Jonathan.
Jonathan, and he said we needed to get.
A variance?
Variance, because we're less than 100 feet to the road. Yay. Yay.
I don't, I didn't think you did either when I read it. Sorry.
Just saying. Wow, that's an expensive. I mean, what, you know, great, but I really don't need it.
Aaron is saying that project needs a front yard setback. Let's see why he says that. Project would add plumbing, renovate the main area of workspace. What are you going to, are you creating another living area?
No, it's an auxiliary kitchen to, yeah.
It's an auxiliary kitchen, which is an existing shed, is pre-existing, non-conforming and is within the front yard setback. Logic there for him. I don't really get that. This is not changing anything.
I mean, you've got electricity in the building right now, right?
Got water.
You got water, right?
No water.
So you bring water in?
I believe so, yeah. Yeah, yeah, ordering water.
And you know how to tie into your septic too, right?
Yeah, I think it's all in the plans. I think it's all.
You ready to make the comment? Go ahead. Just, just because you, uh, give more context to the memo and our statement about needing the front yard variance. Because we weren't sure if the renovations would be any closer to the front yard on the line. And so we were saying that whatever the distance is, it's going to be closer, you need a variance for that. But on understanding that it could not be any closer and if you're not increasing the whole, then you have nothing more to say about that.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah, their memo says the renovated shed would have a slightly different footprint. That's what their memo says. To determine whether a variance is necessary, the applicant should divide the distance between closest point and the renovated shed to the front line.
So it should say on the plan, it moves it actually away from the line a little bit more. So it moves the shed.
Back further from the road?
Back further.
So the footprint is actually shrinking?
Yeah, a little bit. Is that the survey or the architectural plan?
Survey.
So.
Difficult to read.
It's an architectural plan. Um, so I can. So the, um. So this is the existing structure, it's all tiny, tiny box right here. And you can see there's a little bit of a bump out right here. A bump out a tiny bit here. That bump out will become flush. If you can even see it through there, it's easy. But see, it bumps out a little bit right here. That bump out. This is the existing structure here and then this is this glass kind of greenhouse, which is sort of falling apart. So this will stay exactly the same and this bump out will become flush with the edge of that structure. I have photographs too.
So you're basically taking away part of the greenhouse structure.
Yeah.
That's what the plan shows.
Yeah, mine is back. I can shoot, I can talk you through anything and I have photos too. And the photos there should help you.
That's my problem there. Very. Where are you guys parked?
I don't think she needs one. You're saying the bump out is gone to be removed.
Right here.
It's being flushed back.
Yeah, so if you have a photograph, it might be easier to see the photograph.
As long as you're going to flush it.
Right here.
Flush it back, not flush forward.
That's going to be gone, right?
So it's hard to tell from the pictures I took of this.
The part facing the road.
This comes close to the road and this will be, this is that wall. So this wall here will be flush with this wall here. So this will come back away from the road. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah.
And this is only to produce product. You're not going to be conducting any sales at the property.
No, no sales. We don't, we'll be selling. No, that's what we're selling.
So this is, this here is going back to there?
Yeah, that's going to go flush.
Yeah, she's going to have to go planning board for home occupation, the way I read it.
I think based on the building and, but they made, they said I don't need, because it's an auxiliary kitchen and I'm not doing business out of there, I can create an auxiliary kitchen. I'm just producing, I'm not selling.
I reached out to Jonathan on that exact issue and it was his opinion that as long as there isn't any, you know, customers coming on site or business being conducted, that a special permit would not be required. But that if, it's kind of tricky now, but that, because if approval for the variance is granted, Jonathan's recommendation was that it include a statement that a special permit will be required if it is used to have a business, I don't know if people coming on site. But if variance is not required, there's no approval, but.
Then how, what's, what are you using a kitchen for?
So producing cookie dough and granola, but not to, so just as a production facility, not for business, not for no customers, no employees, it's just me.
You make it, ship it out.
And make it and deliver it. Yeah, and deliver it locally.
I still think she's got to go to the planning board first. She's using it as a factory. And if she's making food, it needs a health inspection, I would think.
I think I have to have a health inspection no matter what because of the kind of, the kitchen needs a health inspection, yeah.
Where the health's going to have.
Yeah, so board of health has to approve it anyway because it's being sold. Yeah, and so I think they need that anyway.
Where are you Alex on this whole thing?
When I'm just, to clarify, when you're dealing with a lot line that's non-conforming, is it any adjust or a piece of property where that is non-conforming? Is it, even if you're moving it, do you still need a variance and you're putting it in a more conservative direction? Or?
You're moving, if you're moving the whole square, square footage, okay, and you're making it less non-performing.
Yep.
I don't think you need anything. It's only when you, if you add a two square feet to it.
Then you would need something.
Then you need.
All right, I understand now. Okay. I, I, then I don't see why you would need a variance.
You're there too. Tate and I are there, so.
I agree.
I think you're good to go.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Nice seeing you.
Sorry for the inconvenience.
We only, it was about three weeks ago.
Yes, I was.
Yeah, you hijacked me to buy granola.
I hijacked you. That's my, that's my sales technique.
Yeah, the only thing I would acknowledge is the building inspector thinks this is a home occupation after the planning board, but I think as long as there's no onsite sales or customers coming there, you'd probably be able to get away with it.
Okay. Can I just call my contractor and say we're good to go?
You're good to go.
You're going to have to go back to the building inspector to get a building permit. Building permit.
Okay.
He gives you a hard time, then.
You're going to have to. Tell him that the ZBA ruled that variance wasn't necessary.
Yep.
Do the resolution.
Yeah, it probably wouldn't hurt. I would make a motion that after review of this application, the applicant is not increasing any encroachment to front yard setback. So it's our opinion that no area variance is required.
I second it.
Motion by Frank, seconded by Alex, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, is motion carried, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Yeah, thank you.
Interesting. I asked you. Determination of the. determination of the deal. Zoning administrators. And in summary, I'll try and read it, and then we'll give you a copy, Kim. Whereas the applicant applicant sought review of the zoning administrator's determination of December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and December twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. And whereas the board considered the facts of the case and the matter and evidence produced by Cornell Yargard uh quotations saved for the new slash additional submissions referenced here within un-uh closed parentheses, the zoning administrator and any interesting parties have been duly heard, received, and considered and due deliberation have been had in consideration in the record of findings. Now therefore be it resolved that the foregoing record of finding findings be issued in the zoning board of appeals, finding that the zoning administrators' determinations are affirmed as stated here within, and be it further resolved that Code Section three ninety-one point seven only applies to existing non-conforming structures and be it further resolved that Code Section three ninety-two point five does not prohibit the ZBA from hearing an application for the relief of the requirements of appendix fee of the code, and be it further resolved that the current lot coverage on the subject property is nine thousand and fifty square feet and is prior non-conforming, and be it further resolved that the filings reviewed in determination of a building permit application is not a condition precedent to an area variance application to the ZBA. And be it further resolved that there is no known violation as that term is used in the zoning code of the subject property that would further prohibit a review of an area variance application by the ZBA. And be it further resolved that the Yargard application for relief of the lot coverage regulation may be processed as area variance and be it further resolved that all Yargard applications were staying pending the outcome of this appeal, and be it further resolved that the appeal of the zoning administration determination beyond the December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three and December twenty-third, twenty twenty-three determination are denied as untimely in or slash lack of specificity. Okay. Everybody's had a chance to review this ahead of time and uh look at it. Uh any questions? Any modifications?
No, I have nothing.
No?
Not but.
In that event, then, since uh the Chair offered the following, the following resolution that we just read, I'll second that.
Uh I'm gonna need a voice vote on this. Chair votes, yes, right?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Tate?
Aye.
Okay.
Absent.
Note it that Katie is absent on this. Okay. With that, I think we're basically done for tonight for Kim. Uh based on this, could you put the Yargard application on the uh may adjourned?
We're probably we're probably do we have to publicize again?
I don't know.
We have to put it in the paper again? Yeah, we have to know this for public hearing.
Public hearing again.
For the maybe.
Okay. You understand, Kim, that this, I have to sign this, and you have to sign it and file with the clerk tomorrow.
Okay, the um the KISI journal, is that the only one that you want, or do they have to do the precise elements again?
Wait, I'm sorry, just a question, what's that?
For the Yargard?
Yeah, what about?
So just the add in the KISI journal, like the little average thing?
Do they have to send letters to neighbors?
Oh, no.
No letters? And the escrow? Is there anything to discuss on that?
Yeah.
When when does the escrow have to be paid before the, yeah, probably should send that to them.
Yeah. Um I can give this to Mr. Mackey. Um our secretary has determined that there's a deficiency in the escrow. Okay, I'll give you a copy of this. Thank you.
Okay. What is this? Any other comments?
Uh no, no, the only, no, we'll obviously notify the applicant of the deficiency in the escrow, and also the applicant's gonna be required to make a deposit for for continued review. So the deficiency's gotta be cleared up, and there's gonna have to be an escrow deposit for consultants to review.
Okay.
We'll get that bill over to uh Mr. Mackey for this client's attention.
Motion closed. I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second.
Motion by Frank, seconded by Alex. All in favor?
Aye.
We need a jury.